I would like to have the DAFD talk about it because I'd like to know what they think about like the future runs, if they can probably not figure, you guys can give us anything. What they anticipate like is gonna happen. I mean, I know Dexter Township, a lot of their runs are to the Senior Center, or not Senior Center, I'm sorry, Caesar's Dexter Rights. And so, I, I wanna wait, personally, I wanna wait. Um, I, I got three members on the Fire Department Board, two of which are gonna help me make the decision of, about whether we even doing it in our local agreement, so, or change. So, I see Keo's point, but I also am extremely, like, that whole thing about, he was talking at that five, the last Fire Board meeting about joining with Lowdy, I keep looking for anyone to pay for that stupid fire station.
Oh, that's, that's an obligation of the city.
Right, I know, so this is the thing, really, I don't even know if our board, I mean, I, I don't even know if our board is really interested in actually renegotiating that, but I mean, I would say.
I, I don't think at this point we should. I mean, we can always look, if, if they truly start going up in their, their taxable value, then we can look at it and see if it's.
They're not even close.
Yeah.
They're not even close.
And they won't be for a decade.
They won't be for ages.
Yes, so, I, you know, maybe long term, that might be a wonderful strategy, but for the next ten years, I'm guessing no.
Yeah, same.
Based on that untaxable value, it's ridiculous.
It, but I agree.
No, what, 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 what they wanna do, the chief and the mayor would both like to have a fire authority. Then, all of the community that they serve, they have the authority to, to ask for millage money.
To tax us.
And then, the only funding model is taxable value, period. Yep. And, and that would be a, a huge boon to some members and a huge burden, new burden to other members.
And there's, and break those down, the benefits who gets hurt.
We'd go from thirty-two percent to forty percent, the city would go from thirty-two percent to twenty-five percent.
Yeah, so it's easy, I can negotiate from Tony's standpoint, no? I mean, look, just stand back, attend to the meeting, look what's going on in the city.
Aye, aye.
So, the, the threat will be, the response to that would be, okay, well then, we're gonna bail and we're, this is the viewpoint, my, my perceived viewpoint from the city, my opinion would be, they'd say, we're out.
They can bail, but they, they have to buy all their own equipment.
Well, they would probably.
They could, we could sell it to them.
They would join SIAO.
They won't, SIAO, I don't think SIAO will do it, they're trying to annex that with a.
I, I think the benefit of having some conversations is having, I mean, we have to have conversations.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, in my mind, what they're proposing or they want is not, I mean, it's not fair.
Right.
Um, I think there's a, a model within the interlocal, you can adjust it so there's a, a base paid for service, or, or, you know, paid for ready service, and let's just say it's fifty percent.
Right.
Uh, and then the balance is based on runs.
Correct.
That is a, that is a reasonable possibility.
And I, I mean, and to be fair, I mean, if it's, you know, when I talked to Lonnie, like, I was, personally, I'm open to, it does seem like, at this point, Zach, the Dexter Township might be getting short that. Right, and, um, so yeah, so I, you know, I said, I mean, I personally would not vote for a fire authority, mostly because I don't wanna hand Dexter the right to tax me, um, but I do think, like, it's, yeah, I think, I mean, I guess my thing is, do I, I would like to wait until the Fire Board weighs in on this, personally, just personally. That doesn't mean that, you know, you guys can't overrule me, that's okay.
So, a couple of questions, so if, say something like this happens, there's a change, you know, our village doesn't change though, right?
No.
Regardless of when we decide, we're still collecting this village up.
Unless it's, unless they create an authority, and then they tax us out whatever they need.
Well, they put on a millage and it still has to get passed, right?
But fire millage is just passed.
Well, what's around, what's around the DAB, what's Northfield do for fire, for example? They have a fire department, single, yeah.
Yep.
With their own fire chief. I mean, and. Does that run through the township, you know? They have their own police department as well, I know that.
All right, so pull the thread on if they, if the city decides to go on the greener path, sure. You know, we're, so it's Dexter and Webster that have DAFD that might, so what would be the response? We start letting fire players go, sell trucks?
That was my question, Brandon, what happens if, if they decide to just say, ah, I quit, take my bat and walk along?
You wouldn't wanna, you, you wouldn't wanna sell trucks, they're all paid for except for the brand new one that we just bought.
I, I heard, I asked a question.
What would our cost, see, what would our cost be to run a two-fire-station Fire Department?
Yeah, is, are we viable?
Yeah.
Couldn't, couldn't we be viable financially in that event?
Do we need the city to kick in? If they, if they have their own fire station, which they do, and they have their own need for people, which they do, I assume they would want to hire some of the people who are already there, we would, we would have to share the cost of the chief somehow, but we would still have.
I don't think they're ready to share in the chief, the chief would go one way or the other.
Then we, you'll get a new chief.
But, uh, sharing with Dexter Township, I think.
Right.
We would have to, uh, somebody should do a, and I don't know what their budget is, the, the Fire Department, but somebody should do a, what happens, what do we have to have, what do we have to support if the city bails?
What is your annual budget for the Fire Department in total, six million, I guess?
Uh, what's that, um, the total cost?
We're paying one point two this year, so it's a times three, three point six?
Yeah, that's not too far off.
Yeah, so Tony's best should work. I think, my initial negotiating position would be no. The one, but we'd like you to stay and work with you, but if you do go, we're gonna figure out how to make it work with you.
The, the thing that I would say is driving this conversation is two points. One is the cost of their fire station that they're building, but the other one is, for the past five years, their call rate, their run rate, has gone up every single year, five years in a row. And we split the cost based on run rate, so they're getting hit a double whammy. They get hit by the increase in the run rate and they get hit by the increase of the spending plan.
Well, I, we still have the third component in that we have been hiring firefighters to staff the fairly new Dexter Station and the, you know, really new Webster Station, which, you know, we have not had those expenses, so they have.
That added costs.
Correct. But they were, but they had the firefighters, what I always said, hire trucks and fire houses, don't say, well, I was firefighters too. So, we spent all the money on the firehouse, we had one there. Well, that was part of the commitment, that, that, that participating municipalities made, if we build it, it would be staffed.
Yeah.
And everybody knew that, so.
But Dexter wants the third one now, want, a, a meeting, they want, they want their own, they want three full-time firefighters.
But they, the, the spending, the budget for, so they're on the calendar year, their new fiscal year starts January one.
Dexter Township, Dexter Township.
No, the Fire Department.
Oh, sorry, sorry, but.
Fire Department's fiscal year is January one. We're gonna vote and approve a spending plan in December. I don't know what that vote will pass.
I, I would think it's gonna be similar to what it is, I, you know, we're not gonna hire more firefighters this next year.
I don't think so either.
So, you know, small increase in, I mean, I'm speculating.
We don't know what the, what the surplus is gonna be this year either, the price is gonna be a surplus.
Is there a flaw in the model for somebody like Dexter City that has an increasing run rate? I mean, shouldn't they pay more for increased usage? That's, that's how it's structured now. But is there a flaw in that logic somehow? I mean, argue their standpoint, well, argue their standpoint. I mean, why, right now, it seems like I don't see their point, actually, I. Well, to me, they're not happy that the spending plans have increased. I mean, they, they've argued against hiring firefighters, although, you know, begrudgingly then approve, um, that's adding cost to the, the service, uh, and I think, you know, they're sitting in the middle and, you know, that's the home base, if you will, so, to a certain extent, they've been very, very lucky for, you know, thirty years where they've had service, where the outside our entities, Dexter Township and Webster, have had very poor service relative to the city. Now, it's, it's equalizing and there's a cost to do it, and they're not happy. Well, I think, isn't the bigger reason they're not happy is they've had poor financial management of their funds? The firehouse and however handled, they don't have the money. I mean, that's the point we were just getting at before, so we don't get nothing.
Well, that, that, you've raised an interesting point, so, we have a public safety millage, most of which we spend on fire.
Two-thirds, yeah.
Dexter has a dedicated fire millage, all of which they spend on fire, and they've got a seven-figure fund balance, we've got a seven-figure fund balance. The city pays for the Fire Department out of their general fund, they have no fund balance, yeah.
So, I, you know, partly.
I'm back at Tony's point.
I know, well, that's a, but.
I think I've heard you laugh, we, we negotiate from there.
We need, it's, it's to our benefit to keep them in.
Agreed.
But I.
We should try to keep them in.
We should try, but I don't think, I mean, there, somebody said eighteen, wasn't it Lonnie told me eighteen million bucks for their fire station, and they have, like, they literally are, Sean does not wanna raise city taxes.
They made a terrible choice.
And they're gonna have to try to live with it. So, but again, this is.
They also have sheriff in, they did have sheriff in the fire station, are they still? I mean, is that the plan, that they're still gonna have?
I think so, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, so it's not just, I mean, it's expensive, it's not just fire, they're utilizing it for other stuff, it's a municipal building.
Eighteen billion dollars.
I, I know.
Eighteen billion.
And, you know, frankly, it upsets me that we're talking about that they wanna get out of this as soon, and, and we've been subsidizing them, literally subsidizing them for decades, and as soon as we get two firefighters, and it may be coincidence, because obviously, we're talking about, uh, a Fire Department.
It's like a purpose.
A new building, so, but as soon as we get two firefighters, which was just what, last year? Now, all of a sudden, it's unfair, and I, I get that they have budget issues.
All right, so that gets back to.
But.
Yeah. Okay, okay, so, I, I, I hear.
I agree with Tony.
Yeah, go, if, just a second, so, okay, so, first night, again, right, um, I had originally just, you know, put this on the agenda, because if we are gonna go that route with, you know, dealing with the city before we deal with, for the Fire Department, that's what they want, then I need another person? Or we just go with three? Um, not yet.
I guess, I guess the question comes down to, I mean, the more people that are on it, if you guys are gonna vote to take some, I, I mean, is this just a discussion group that people are gonna do what they wanna do?
Well, they also come back.
Or is this a thing that you're gonna vote to do something and?
Well, it also come back to us, anyway.
Or ultimately, it will.
So, I guess I'd ask, I mean, okay, I gotta just burn the people with expertise.
And frankly.
Dan, what do you think?
Well, I believe if, if there are four people from the other two entities, we should have four.
Okay, so, all right, I will ask, I will ask, and then, I'm, unfortunately, I'm thinking Tony today because of the, he's got the idea, the funding idea, but.
They need to do a rate study, they wanna talk about it, I'm sure you're, you're familiar with what that is, Dan, I mean, and all the elements that go into it, and if, if they're seriously about, if they're serious about pulling out, you don't want them to pull out, and they wanna change things, then let them do a rate study and then we'll, with an independent entity to do it, nobody from.
If they pull out, the cost goes up for everyone.
Yeah, there was a draft, um, when it was being discussed as a subcommittee of DAFD, there was a draft charge of that group, and there was so much work that was being proposed that, I was like, this is gonna take two years to do all the things that were.
If, if, if you try to do it with the people on hand.
Yes, I would, I'm consultants, I mean, that's what I would recommend.
I was trying to get a motion passed that the nine people would write their own charge. Each municipality puts three people into the room and those nine people write their own charge. That's what I think should happen.
Yeah, that's, I mean, there's no charge at the moment, so.
Well, the one that you mentioned, the draft, was ungodly, unwieldy, it was way too broad, it was way too deep.
Yeah, okay. Who would do the, who would, who would do the business case if it went down to Dexter and Webster?
Would it be the Fire Board that would do it? Or DAFD study that, or would we have to hire somebody in the bed?
I mean, it would be, it'd be our responsibility, or remember, we would be trying to tamper with our. Our responsibility, or, or us, Webster Township. I believe so, yeah.
So, what's the benefit for them doing this and not doing it through the Fire Board, like, technically, in my opinion, should've been done.
They're, so they're.
They have, yeah. They've already had one newspaper article written about this, they're, they will frame the, the, the evil townships are not allowing us to be frugal or be prudent or whatever.
And they want us in their house, even though we could host everybody in there.
They just wanna control the narrative and they care about the Fire Board.
And I'm not here to say that, I'm gonna say he, but I'm not stupid.
I think Tony used to be.
Aye. Well, okay, so, so that's, if Tony said yes.
I'm sorry, get out of.
All right, do we wait? Do we wait for the Fire Board?
Well, I think they're. So, there's a Fire Board meeting, after tomorrow.
Are, is it on the agenda?
I didn't look at the agenda, is it not the agenda?
All right.
Hold up, my.
And did we get that today?
And while I'm thinking of this, I just look up the ACEP Agricultural Council. Eastwood Program.
I did too, oh, there.
Agriculture, okay, thank you, thank you very much. All right, that's.
So Chuck's dying, right there?
Yeah, Chuck's falling asleep.
We're getting a check card.
Hopefully, that will not be that long. Yes, it's, uh, item H1.
Okay, so I propose we wait.
What was, what was your reading?
Uh, page twenty-three, let me look. Consideration of Interlocal Review Committee submitted by Lonnie Scott and Karen Sekena. There is an open question regarding the next steps to review the current interlocal agreement and explore alternative language, allocation of cost and structure for the DAFD. There is an interest in appointing a committee, appointing committee members to meet and create a recommendation for a scope of work to be brought back to the board for consideration. The city has initiated a process to review the interlocal and has invited member municipalities to join these discussions. That's all it says.
Okay. Sounds like, sounds like we're gonna wait, if that's okay with all the guys.
All right, let's talk about cameras.
Okay, um, all right, thanks for all that, um, so, approval of security camera system purchase. So, this is, uh, we went for the grant, or, you know, was it okay for the, going for the grant last week? And, um, Chuck's here to answer lies or any of that, you know, why we need it, what we need, in case you have questions. Did you wanna tell him how you picked, like, these people?
Sure.
Chuck was, Chuck's been the, you know, point person.
This is our current alarm supplier, right? It is.
Oh, okay, there we go.
It is, so this was, um, initially, part of this is not just the, the system itself, the video system, I should say, part of this, seven hundred and ten dollars of this is going to be upgrades, we need to do to the alarm system to cover the, the changes to the building.
All right, so total project cost is ten, we're gonna get a grant for twenty-five hundred, and the other seventy-five hundred's all us?
Yeah, yes, and we have, the grant submission has been done, we won't hear about that until November, I believe is what they left, we all just got.
Okay.
Can you explain the black dots on the diagram? Yes, so, basically, the, do I need to draw the diagram or the extra one there?
Okay, I only see one diagram, this one.
Okay, yeah, this is, you know, the one, this, I think it got.
Yeah, it started, black and white.
Yeah, mine's black and white.
Yep.
Yeah, so, um, the black dots are locations with cameras, there's gonna be a camera covering the exit of the addition area, uh, both exits, I should say, uh, entrances, I should say, um, one covering the, uh, new conference room, one covering the front door, so you can actually see people that are interacting at the, uh, front, uh, in the front lobby area, and then there'll be one at each corner, so we'll get not only people, uh, talking to the board, but you also get the board from behind. Then there will also be a camera on the, on this entrance also, so we're gonna be covering all the entrances. Um, there's also, I believe there's one camera in here also to, um, cover the closet for the election supplies. Now, when we go outside, some of these are outside, uh, but they're just shown on the inside diagram. The outside diagram is just the aerial view, you guys, I don't know if you have that.
No.
Yeah, we had it last week, but.
Okay, so, with the outside views, there's one camera on this outside view, um, if you still have the tech from last week, there's one camera that we don't have and it's not, it's too much of an expenditure, not enough, um, benefit out of it, uh, but we will have is two one-hundred-and-eighty degree cameras that will cover every bit of parking lot we have, we also have, we also have an automatic pantill zoom camera that will cover, uh, the north side of the building, which will cover the recycle area and anything going in there, so the cameras will automatically zoom in on the motion out there and follow it.
So, are these, are these all new cameras, Chuck?
These are all new cameras, all new cameras.
You're totally revamping this.
Yes.
Okay, and they're much better quality than the ones we have?
Yes.
Good, I think.
Extremely, extremely, and the one, the one we have now is typical of what I used to see as a detective from twenty fifteen. Um, and also, if I came in that office to do bad things, first thing I would do is grab that, grab that system and then take it out with me.
So, they're gonna move, that was the one I was gonna ask, they're gonna move the.
The system will be moved to a more secure location.
The cloud.
Department, but what we will.
You can't take the cloud.
The extra pushdown that we will get is if we do get, well, first of all, we got integration with the security system, so, if we have a problem, Mike will have a pad that comes with the system, an iPad, and he'll be able to remote in, everywhere we'll be able to remote in that has, that we give access to, um, so he can remote in to see if we've got an alarm trip, we can actually see if something's actually going on or not. Um, this will also make it so that we, um, can do these from our desktop, uh, from our, uh, desktop computers.
Sure.
Um, so I, probably the only one that's wants to do that, but I'd love to see the front door when I'm back here to see if there's anything that I need to bust up front to, to help with, that's all standing. But the quality, the quality will be good enough that we will be able to get, uh, the kind, you know, be able to quality that we can get identifications, I mean, bad doors, that we have coming either into the meetings causing problems or coming into, um, the hall for, coming, just causing any problems. Right now, we can barely get a styled car, much less a license plate on it.
Yeah. How does, question, how does the storage, data storage work?
We, we will have, um, a dedicated, uh, unit that stores it on an hard drive, and that unit also allows us some upgradeability in the future also, if we want to add extra cameras for anything else, so.
So, is it permanently stored or is it the?
It's gonna be available, yeah.
What's the link?
I believe they're considering sixty days, it also depends on, it's a software type of case, so that, so that you can, um, it depends on what resolution you want to save at also, but I do believe we've got sixty days with what we, with what we bid out, which we had to now.
Uh, this is sort of a probably redundant question, but I've got the diagram for inside of the hall. We have to have, um, the body box, the, um, monitored at all, all the time.
That is, that is gonna be covered.
That is covered.
One I missed, going through the other ones.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, I guess, look.
I have a Tony, a Tony question, um, so, some of the spaces, election space.
They'll have to be turned off.
How does that work?
Well, I, right now, we put a bag over them, but.
It'll be a little bit more. Right now, what we do is we unplug them.
Well, well, we have two bags over them.
Yes, it'll be the same method.
Yeah.
To unplug them.
Yes.
I mean, the bag tells the voter, that, that's more for the voter.
Okay, so, yes, either, um, uh, response to Brandon's question, I guess I would like a motion to approve this purchase.
Salute. Second, okay, any other discussion?
Okay.
Um, you don't want, you don't want all of your, your money now? Uh, could, but it's under twenty-five grand, so we don't have to. This, this basic decision was, Mike came to me and said, I need to know what it's gonna take to upgrade the system that we got now. We don't need to upgrade the security system, they said that they can work with that, they added the stuff we need, um, along with that was the discussion of, let's see what they have available Does this include new switches for doors and switches for windows, like, almost none of these windows are switched? It will not, because they do, they have upgraded stuff, or they have upgraded sensors to cover new spaces. So, the old spaces that are not secure will still not be secure, except for the motion detectors? What we will, what, what we will be doing is moving, uh, moving the perimeter out from where it is now. The deficiencies, whereas it stops here, so what we will end up with is, we will end up with, um, triggers on all of the doors, but not every window is going to be monitored. We will also have a, um, motion for the new conference room back there.
That, that could be an option, possibly, or get a couple of motion detectors.
Right, but this is. This does not replace our current system, this just adds to the current system, they, they felt that a whole new system was not needed, but those upgrades, that's, that's where the seven hundred and twenty dollars comes from, and on their line item, it's, uh, two wireless, uh, door, uh, window transmitters and then, um, three, um, motion sensors.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, um, roll call vote, Brandon?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, that is Heather.
Okay, so, I didn't, was anything in.
Okay, so, and was anything in correspondence?
Thanks, Chuck.
Yeah, thanks, Chuck. Oh, okay, um, so yeah, first round in, if you wanna talk about anything, otherwise, um, call to the board.
Put that...
All right, uh, here's the board member.
Who's there?
Yeah, who do we turn, for our, so, you, who, right? Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, thank you.